This conference will now be recorded. Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Towne of Harwich Board of Appeals on this January 27, 2021, opening at 7:00 PM is being conducted via remote participation. So in person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. You can do so. Probably everybody who wants to be here is here, but if any of you are here without video, you can go to the Towne of Harwich website, click on to, I think it's Boards, get to the Board of Appeals, click on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and there'll be a link that will get you on here. Okay. I would ask everybody to mute themselves if you're not speaking. That keeps down the background noise. Thank you. And I guess we will start by having our board members introduce themselves. I'm Dave Ryer. Jamie?
I'm James Armstrong.
Ian?
I'm Brian.
Chris?
Chris Murphy.
Al?
Alexander Donahue.
And Shayla?
I'm Chair Delaney Secretary.
Okay. We have eight cases tonight, so I think everybody's already been advised, but I'll just restate it. We will conduct the meeting until 10:00 PM. Any cases that aren't heard by 10:00 will get continued over to February till our next meeting, which is... Well, I thought I had it written down, but it's the last Wednesday of February, whatever that happened.
February 24th.
The 24th, yes, of 2021. Okay. Before I forget it, in cases where the Board approves an application, I authorize our Secretary Shayla Delaney to stamp all of the relevant plans and other documents in that case since we're COVID protocol. Okay. I am going to start by making a motion to continue cases 2020-51, 2020-53, and 2020-54 to our February 24, 2021 meeting. These applicants have requested that we continue their cases to that date. I suggest that they might want to do this, given the length of the agenda, rather than wait to see if they can get heard before 10:00 PM. So that's the motion. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
A second on motion.
Okay. Second by Mr. Donahue. Shayla, any discussion by the Board?
Just go through those three cases again for me, if you would, please.
2020-51, 2020-53, 2020-54.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Shayla, if we have to continue any cases tonight, the continued cases from tonight, ones that are here, would go first. We'll do it in that order. If not, we will, on these three continued cases, put them in the order in which they requested their continuing.
That's... I've already started an agenda and we have them. It looks like they're in the American wrong, but they're in the order they asked.
All right. Well, in that case, if any of them have to go over from tonight, they'll just have to go onto the agenda wherever the next openings are. Any discussion by the Board on this motion? None? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of continuing these three cases? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried unanimously. These cases will be continued to our next meeting. Okay. Al, if you could call our first case for this evening, please.
All right. Case number 2020-40, which is continued from December 9, 2020. Jonathan and Sarah Vanekka, trustees of the Vanekka Living Trust through their agent. Attorney Sarah Toronto Flores have applied for special permit or the alternative of variance to add, demolish, and replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and residential accessory structure on pre-existing non-conforming lot. The applicant is pursuant to Code of Towne of Harwich 325-22, Table 2, Area Regulation of 325-14Q. As set forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, property is located at 2 Quasen Lane, Map 7, A50OR, in the R11-RH-1 zoning district.
Okay. Once again, thanks, Al. Once again, I'll ask anyone who's not speaking to put themselves on mute, and you do that by clicking on that little green telephone down in the left-hand corner of your, I don't know, icon, I guess, I'll call it, whatever that little block is, just to cut down the background noise and the static while somebody is speaking. Thank you. Attorney Colonel Flores, if you could make your presentation, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. Attorney Sarah Toronto Flores, on behalf of the applicants, Jonathan and Sarah Vanekka. With me this evening, I see on the screen, is the project contractor, Rick Roy. Also, the project designer, Kevin Dofanay is here, and the project engineer, Sean Riley of Coastal Engineering. You should have in front of you a site plan from Coastal Engineering showing both existing and proposed conditions. It was updated and filed earlier this week after we continued from the last hearing to do some outreach to the neighborhood. We did make some changes as well as after the Conservation Commission hearing, so that site plan should be in front of you as well as the elevation and floor plans by Mr. Dofanay. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It was created in 1929, so it predates zoning. It was part of the Air Lane subdivision, which lies largely to the east of this particular lot. This lot is the most southeast early corner of that larger subdivision. At the time, Pine Street and that subdivision wasn't there. It was owned by another party. This developer developed all of these lots and granted the sole access for this particular lot over the neighboring parcel at 4 Quasen Lane. So our driveway easement into the property has been there since 1929, and that is how the property is accessed. The existing lot itself is non-conforming because of the lack of frontage and lap. It's also undersized. The existing single-family residence is pre-existing non-conforming. It currently sits 11 feet approximately from the easterly sideline. There is also a shed on the property that's 104 square feet. Your bylaw requires that structures that are over 100 square feet comply with setbacks. This does not, so it is also pre-existing non-conforming. It is 13 and 14 feet respectively from the northerly and westerly sidelines or property bounds. The Vanekkas, as the project application describes and as my narrative details, wish to demolish and reconstruct the single-family dwelling, and also, in the place of the shed, construct a detached garage with a bedroom over. The design team, when looking at this project, thought carefully about a number of things. First, the lot is somewhat constrained because it does sit on the sound. It is within the existing structures, within 27 feet of the top of the coastal bank. And behind that, we needed to put the septic system, to get the septic system out of the 100-foot buffer to that coastal bank. And all of the setbacks that are attendant to that septic system, we needed to sort of fit the house and the garage between the coastal bank and the septic system. We also had to be mindful of the drive coming in and the flow of the cars coming in and out, and how they would access a garage. So with those considerations in mind, you see the proposed plan in front of you, which cites the detached garage in the upper left-hand corner, or that's the northwest corner of the lot, still within the setbacks. It is altering the pre-existing non-conformity of the existing sheds in that it's still in the setbacks to the north and westerly property line. With regard to the dwelling, we held the 11-foot setback on the easterly sideline, rather than going further to the east and further encroaching into that setback area. The expansion was sighted on the west side of the house. We maintain a 20-foot setback along that entire westerly lot line, and we hold the 11-foot setback on the easterly lot line. And again, this was important because the dwelling store, as you might recall, is six feet from the lot line. A special permit was granted in 2019 to bring that house closer to the shared property line. One of the decks comes within 3.7 feet of the property line. They're a small lot, and so rather than further congest that side of the property, the design focused on adding the additional building coverage to the west side of the lot. Again, though, maintaining 20 feet of setback distance from the westerly line for that at its closest location. Again, the new, the existing house is 27 feet from the top of the bank, and the proposed house will be 30 feet setback from that top of coastal bank. We did make an adjustment after the initial ZDA application was filed at the request of the Conservation Commission to move it back. You couldn't move it further back, though, because of the leaching component, and if you have questions about how that works and the sighting of the driveway over it, Sean can further expand on that. We also, after the continuance from the last hearing and outreach with neighbors, moved the garage slightly further off the north property line and took the hoopla off the top, so that this garage will still be in that corner, but eight feet from the northerly line, five feet from the westerly, no hoopla on the top. If you've been up to the site, I don't know if you have, there were some photographs submitted with some of the butter letters. Along Pine Street, there's always been fencing, kind of separating the air subdivision from the Pine Street subdivision. Right now, there's a stockade fence that runs along the westerly boundary between this property and Pine Street on that side. And then there's a hedge that runs on the inside of that fence, both along the westerly boundary and the northerly boundary. To the extent that hedge has to come down, it will be replaced. The idea is to keep that privacy for all parties involved, and the fence, to the extent it's objectionable, can come down and stay down, but the vegetation will remain, and I think that that is something that the butters wanted to see. So that's a description of the proposed site or the proposed project. As described in the notice that was just read, we need two forms of special permit relief. One, to alter the pre-existing non-conforming intrusions into the setbacks, and two, because we're putting a bedroom over the detached garage, your bylaw requires a special permit for that as well. The special permit criteria that is set forth in Section 325-51 of your bylaw is covered in my narrative, but I'll quickly review it. Give me a moment. The, there's four criteria primarily, and the first is that the Board may grant these special permits if it finds that the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. As we've described in our zoning narrative, the existing structure is an outdated, small ranch cottage. Certainly, the design Mr. Dofanay has created is beautiful. It is a cage-style structure. It's in keeping with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Its roofline is broken up. You'll see that the massing is broken up. The massing is further broken up by detaching that garage and putting it over in the northwest corner of the lot. That not only helps with circulation for the driveway within the lot, as well as the sighting of the septic system, but it also makes the structure less imposing than it would be if the garage were an attached structure. As noted in my description of the project, this will be centralized on the lot, so now it's not going to be so lopsided on the one side. We will still be slightly more to the west, but also create still a large buffer, sorry, slightly closer on the east than the rest of the property. On the west, although we are moving closer to the westerly lot line, we're still leaving 20 feet from that lot line, and I think importantly, we're still leaving a great distance from the surrounding dwellings. I did Google Earth measurements today and spoke to my project team about them. We are 70 feet from the closest building at the garage location, which is the closest to that lot line. 70 feet from 14 Atlantic Avenue. We're 110 feet from 17 Atlantic Avenue, again, at the location of the garage, which is closest to Pine Street. We're 150 feet from 9 Pine Street. We're 100 feet, the garage is 100 feet from 10 Pine Street, and 135 feet from the flanneries, which are at 12 Quasen behind the Vanekka's property. So we, although we did add the additional coverage on the west side of the lot, we feel that we still are creating a lot of distance between those lots, and again, because the hedges will be there, we will continue to provide that privacy. And so, in light of all of these considerations, we feel that we meet the first criteria, that the proposed project will not adversely affect the neighborhood. We also feel it needs a second criteria, which is that the site is appropriate location for the use structure proposed here. Of course, it's the replacement of a single-family dwelling with a single-family dwelling. Residential use is allowed in your underlying zoning district. Most importantly, we feel that the project will be an environmental improvement. The Conservation Commission did approve it at its meeting in December, an order of conditions issued for the project on January 8. Again, the dwelling is further back from the bank. Certainly, the septic system now is completely out of the 100-foot buffer, and we provided a lot of mitigation planting, lawn removal and mitigation planting on the seaward face of the house, which will further stabilize the coastal bank and provide, help to provide and promote the coastal bank functions of storm damage prevention, flood control, and wildlife habitat. So we feel, for these reasons, that the proposed project is appropriate for the site, which is your second criteria under the special permit provisions of your bylaw. The third criteria, that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Again, we are accessing this site over an easement that has been there since 1929. We're replacing a single-family dwelling with a single-family dwelling. We're not, you know, intensifying the use in any way. We feel that this prong of your standard is satisfied as well. And finally, the fourth prong of your standard is that adequate and appropriate facilities be provided for sewage and water. Here we are providing this fully upgraded Title V compliant septic system, again, outside of your 100-foot buffer from the top of the coastal bank, so protection of groundwater and water quality interests are met with this proposal. Of course, there's probably drinking water here, and for these reasons as well, we feel the fourth criteria of your bylaw is met. So in light of all of that, and because we feel we meet the criteria of the special permit provisions of your bylaw, we feel it's appropriate for the Board to grant both the special permit for the alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming setbacks, as well as for the bedroom above the garage. And we, I think I'll stop it right there. I know you have a really long agenda, and to the extent that there are questions of the Board or questions that we can answer after public comment, our whole project team would be happy to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't, as part of your presentation now, you address the points that were raised by Mr. and Mrs. Griffin. They submitted a number of points.
Sure. I can do that. The, I think that their primary concern, and again, we understand it's a tight neighborhood and folks, you know, it's difficult to see change, so we have had communicate, my client has had communications with them, trying to understand their concerns a bit more, and I know Mr. Griffin's on the line, so I don't want to put words in his mouth, but to the extent that I read his letters and understand his concerns, the idea that the Pine Street setback of 25 feet should apply, I think is his greatest concern, both to the garage and to the house. And with regard, with regard to the 25-foot setback itself, I feel that because this lot predated zoning, that was created in 1929 and Pine Street wasn't there at the time, that it's pre-existing non-conforming to the extent it had no frontage, and that the, it's never been used as frontage. They have never accessed the property off of Pine Street. Fencing and vegetation has long precluded any access off that, off that street. You know, again, there's a pre-existing shed tucked up in that location with a stockade fence and lots of shrubs, precluding any kind of access. So for all of those reasons, and particularly because it predated Pine Street and the frontage requirements of the bylaw, I don't think that the frontage provisions should and do apply here. Notably, there's only a 12-foot section of the house that extends into, goes from 20 feet into the setback instead of 25. So it's de minimis as well. With regard to the garage, obviously, whether you call it frontage or not, whether you call it a sideline setback or frontage, the garage, the existing shed is already violative of those setbacks. And so, we're altering a pre-existing non-conforming structure by locating it in that setback. And there was a lot of important thought going into that. It wasn't just sort of thrown there. The reason for that was to enable the septic system to be sighted outside the 100-foot buffer and to allow for the circulation within the property for the driveway. If you were to stick the garage on the side of the house, you'd have to come in around the driveway and make a U-turn, and the turning radius in the lot is so small, that's a really constrained way to do it. And it also, as Sean can explain, creates problems for the setbacks with regard to the septic system. So for all of those reasons, we've cited it there. We don't believe a variance is required. We believe that this can be done by special permit through the alteration of the pre-existing non-conformities. And I, you know, I think that between the Gale case and the recent Comstock versus Zoning Board of Appeals Gloucester case, accessory structures such as garages can be afforded the same protections that single and two-family dwellings are afforded, and they are allowed to be altered by special permit, as long as no new non-conformities are being created, and where the existing structure already protrudes into those setbacks, whether you call them frontage or just sidelines, we're just altering those pre-existing non-conformities. And so, for all of those reasons, I think that our relief we're requesting is the appropriate one, and because we meet the criteria, we also think that the Board is able to issue a special permit.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Toronto Flores. We'll see if the Board has any comments or questions. Jamie?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Al? Al, Al Donahue?
I have no questions.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, thank you. And Attorney, excellent presentation. My question is, I think the, the location of the house, you know, tear-down, rebuilding, I feel that that meets all the criterias, and from my point of view, my question is primarily concerned the shed area and proposed garage. You know, basically, I agree the fact that although it's only 104 square feet, regardless, it is there, it is over the 100-foot scenario, you're making a non-conformity. What is the, the new pad square footage of that garage?
I'm going to ask, because it's not...
Yeah, this is Kevin Dofanay. So the pad square footage of the garage is 720 square feet.
Okay. From my point of view, and I'm trying to wrap my head around this one, but basically, you're doing an intensification of the shed situation because it's non-conforming, and you're allowed to do intensification, but those changes or alterations should be substantially more, not more detrimental in existing non-conformity structure or use the neighborhood. So we're doing a intensification from 104 square feet to, on a pad, to over 700, and now we're going to shed, not intensive, the intensification isn't to go for a bigger shed, but now we're going for a two-car garage in a living facility over the garage. And from my viewpoint, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around this, is that how that qualifies as far as intensification of a use when the original use has been for a small shed? We're not going for a larger shed. We're not doing a two-car garage, and we're creating a new living unit over the garage. And that's my main problem as far as looking at this and for my approval. I wonder if you might comment on that further?
Yes, through the chair. So, but you have me in terms of we are intensifying the pre-existing non-conforming nature of the structure, but it's the intensification of the setbacks, not the use. The use, whether it's a shed or a garage or whatever, is permitted as a right under zoning, so we're not seeking relief because of that. The bedroom over, we are a special permit, but the, the, the non-conformity, the intensification of the non-conformity special permit that we're seeking, and the substantially more detrimental prong of it relates to the intrusion into the setback and not the use of it. And I think that the only reason it is there is because of the difficulties on this constrained lot that I talked about before, that if you attach it to the dwelling, then, then you, you wind up with this problem of sighting the garage and the driveway and having vehicles be able to safely maneuver within it. That, that seemed to be the most logical place to put it to solve those problems, and it also does, though, it speaks to what you were talking about, the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It breaks up the massing that someone would otherwise see if this were an attached garage. I don't think if this were an attached garage with a room above that was connected from the interior of the building, you'd be having the same problem. I think that because it's detached and it's in this corner, that, that might be causing you to scratch your head and wonder why we're going from a shed to a garage, but that, the use isn't what we're seeking zoning relief for. It's the intensification of the non-conforming setbacks in that corner. And I'm hoping that we will understand the reasons that we did it and recognize because of the existing conditions and because, because the lot in that corner is already so screened with that vegetation, which will be replaced, it's almost sort of other. It can't, it is heavily screened and only the roof...
it's, it's almost sort of other. It can't, it, it is heavily screened and, and only the roof, the second, the second part of the garage, the upper story of the garage, will be visible over, over that vegetation. So the majority of the neighborhood on that side, you won't even see it. And so for this reason, we think not only does it qualify for the special permit, but it meets that substantially more detrimental prong.
I, I appreciate that. From being, from walking around the shed and, and sitting on Pine Street, the current vegetation does cover the existing height of the shed, which is, you know, about 10 feet. We're now going to a, over a 20-foot structure on the, on the finished floor elevation, I believe. And so I guess my, we've got the usage. I guess my, my key concern is having a living unit over that, over that new garage or where the shed used to be. That's probably my, my key concern here. And I think that is really more of an intensification of a current use in structure. And that's, I just want to express my feelings on that. The rest of the lot, how you handle things, I think they've done an excellent job regarding the new location of the house. I have no problem with the frontage not being Pine Street and the current egress, all, all that makes sense. And, but it's, so I guess after what you just said, I would be more inclined to approve the garage itself, but not a second floor, which would be well over the current vegetation and not for a living unit. That's my current feelings.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Brian?
I'm done. Thank you very much. Thank you for my time.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, the, the, the plan as proposed certainly fits within the general neighborhood of the size of the homes in that area. And many of them have these secondary structures with bedrooms, so that doesn't cause me any problem. Obviously, for the lot from 1921, it was clearly laid out with a front-back side, boundaries were intended to be the ocean and the back near the shed. And the sides were not frontage on Pine Street back when it was 1929. The size and shape of the lot would make it difficult, in fact, to build really any kind of reasonable house if you used a front setback being Pine Street. So the, the layout on that, that property seems reasonable to me. And not a problem with the, the main structure. Replacing the shed with a garage with the bedroom is, does not seem to be a problem. It's an auxiliary structure, secondary structure, just being replaced with a second structure, not a main structure. So that, that seems to also fit, so. I have no other questions, actually. No, no questions. All just those comments.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Yeah, my only concern is sort of the same one Brian has. We have a garage that is not a residential accessory building. It's a shed. And now we're proposing to put a residential accessory building there under 32514Q. And I guess why is that not a new non-conformity?
So again, I guess, I guess I'm, and maybe this is, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking lawyer speak because we, zoning is very complex, and I've been doing this, you guys know me, I've been doing this for a really long time, and I still tie myself up in knots. So we're not intensifying a non-conforming use. The use of garage, a detached garage, and, and, and even bedrooms above, the garages are allowed in the underlying district, no, no relief needed. A garage with a bedroom requires a special permit, but they're all allowed uses in your underlying zoning district. So the, the zoning relief with regard to the setbacks that we're looking for relates to the structure itself and not the use inside the structure. We do need a special permit for the bedrooms above. But for the structure, under the Gale case and the Comstock case from the summer, we only need a special permit for the structure. And so I, I don't see it as we need to query what's going on inside of it other than we need the special permit for the bedroom. But we're not intensifying any non-conforming use otherwise. Did that, is that making sense?
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I guess my concern is we have a, really a non-conforming shed because it's, or an unpermitted shed because it's over the 100 square feet.
Right.
To get it setback in the first place, and I assume there's no special permit or variance that permitted that. So you're trying to shoehorn that into a accessory, residential accessory building with bedrooms.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I'm just having a little difficulty as to why that's not a new non-conformity. If you had a smaller accessory building there with bedrooms, that would have been permitted initially under special permit. You wanted to enlarge it, then I, I agree completely with your argument. But what we have here is a shed that's over the allowed square footage to be viol, in violation of the setback there.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, I guess there's two ways to look at it. The, the shed converting to a garage, if the garage didn't have a bedroom, let's, let's say, for example, the garage didn't have a bedroom above, and we didn't need the second special permit. I guess the section 32514Q of your bylaws says a residential accessory building that contains bedrooms requires a special permit, okay? So put a garage there with storage above, no bedroom above. All we'd be needing for it is the special permit relative to the setbacks. So I think when I'm focused on the setbacks, which I think is, is Mr. Griffin's concern, we don't look at what's inside, the garage would still need the special permit because of its location and the setbacks, use having nothing to do with it. The second special permit we need is to put the living space above. That requires a special permit. But I don't think that it's a jump to say to go from a shed to a special permit. If, if, if this wasn't in the setback, so if we move the garage further into the lot, we'd still need a special permit to put bedrooms above the garage. So two different inquiries that are not really related to any intensification.
That's the way I was looking at it. If the shed was not there, you could not cite this accessory building, the garage, where you want to cite it without a variance.
Right, right. I think that's, that's right.
And that's, so you're, you're trying to do is take a shed that doesn't comply because it's square foot, it's over the 100 square feet, I think it's 104 square feet, and use that setback violation, if you will, to justify a special permit for the accessory residential building with bedrooms. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I hear it. It, it, it sounds, it sounds like, you know, two more steps beyond what's permitted, and maybe my parsing, the, the two special permits makes it a little more difficult to conceive. I guess this is the sort of living area that the, the clients would, had envisioned for the site if, if this had been attached. So because of all of the difficulties with the site that make attaching this difficult, both with regard to the driveway and the septic and the setback from the coastal bank, we separated it. If, 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 it sounds like two of you are concerned about this, and if that is, continues to be concern, and it sounds like it is, my explanations aren't helping you. If we remove the living area above the garage, does that satisfy those concerns? And then it's just the special permit, we only need the one special permit for the alteration of the setbacks?
Well, I don't, I don't think that is my issue. It doesn't solve it. But I'll tell you what, why don't we hold this in abeyance? When we have a chance to discuss it in the board, we'll discuss it further, if that's okay. I don't think you're suggesting, so my concern. And maybe it's not a concern. I, I don't know. It's a very technical point that I'm raising. I understand that. And it's not clear to me what the answer is, really. I just wanted to get some input from you on your reasoning on it, if that's okay. We'll just leave it at that. Now, I'm satisfied with, you know, your response. I'm still, I'm going to think about it a little more while we're opening it up to the public, if that's okay.
Sarah, may I, might, may I add some commentary that might help clarify what you're trying to suggest?
Sure. I mean, through the chair.
Yes. So this is Kevin Daphne, the designer. So I guess maybe because we're calling the existing structure a shed might be part of the issue of, of understanding, you know, the, the new garage that's going there. So imagine that structure, so it's 100, 104 square feet, so it's over the minimum or the maximum required for a shed. So if it were currently a single-car garage that were, say, 200 square feet, and then we were proposing a two-car garage with living space above, would you have the same issue with the structure, you know, changing the structure type?
Yes, because that would require a variance. Because the
How so?
The special permit is for residential accessory building with bedrooms. Otherwise, if you go down to go to 32554, if it's not either a single or two-family dwelling house, let me just get this. It's 32454A7. A, well, it would be B. All other non-conforming structures, that is, other than single or two-family residential structure, shall require a variance for any alteration, extension, or reconstruction. So that, that doesn't resolve the issue. I do appreciate the comment, but let me think about it. It's a very technical point, and I'm not sure of the answer, but I just wanted to throw it out there and get some, get your reaction to it.
Yeah, there was, there was recent case law that came down in August of this, this summer, and I included it in my narrative. And it, it, it's the Comstock case, and it dealt with an accessory garage. And it discussed whether an accessory garage can be altered by special permit where it's not single-family or two-family dwelling, called out in 48. And in that instance, in a footnote, the court said, "We don't need to decide that question today." However, given our extensive case law, we believe that it can. They did not decide it, but the Comstock case telegraphed that the Massachusetts Appeals Court would consider the alteration of a pre-existing, and in that case, it was a garage being altered. It would, could be done by special permit and not by variance. And that, that might be something to discuss with your, your town attorney. But I did reference it and cite the case in my memo, if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, no, I actually printed the cases and read them. But it wasn't clear to me, and I don't, I, I used to be a lawyer, so I don't remember if they were detached or attached. I think there is a difference. Attached, to me, it's yes, absolutely. But detached, that's sort of a different animal.
It, it was detached. In, in the Comstock case, it was a detached garage.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I'm going to open up the comment period to the public. So is there anyone out in the public that's on this call that would like to address this particular application? Anyone?
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you identify your?
Yes, I'm on a phone, so I'm hoping you can hear. My name is Dan Griffin, and I'm in a butter.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You and your wife submitted a letter, two letters.
Thank you. So yes, so just in, in comment to, to what was heard and discussed, the, I, I, I would like to hear a little bit more about the board. I, you know, I know the property was in 1929, but I'm, I'm not sure why, you know, under the present bylaws, why, you know, they, they, if they could comment why they don't feel that it, it is frontage on Pine Street based on the size, the parameters, and, and, and the zoning of what frontage is actually stated. But also, in regard, in regards to the, to the shed and, and and the developing of a, you know, a two-car carriage house in the back corner, I, I really, you know, I do think it, it's a huge intensification. I really have a hard time justifying how, you know, a small storage shed, which, which has setbacks even further than a seven, you know, they're going to build a structure that's seven times the footprint of it. They're going to move it to within five feet of the corner of the lot, which, you know, I'm right, I'm directly a budding, so my property is basically 25 feet from this new, new structure. It is visual. We do, do, you know, we do see it is going to be, you know, intensifying the look from our property. But even if, you know, under their justification of, of an existing structure that they're trying to intensify, the, the footprint isn't even holding the, the, it's really an illegal, non-conforming structure that's there. So I don't, I don't see how like someone can have an illegal, non-conforming structure on their property, and, and that allows you to, you know, to go to another non-conformance and intensify it. So if I know that, you know, there was some discussion on that, but that, the biggest, we're not trying to be combative neighbors. I, I do think the, the Vanickers did a nice job designing the house, and, and we're not trying to be unrealistic. But it is a, you know, a huge impact to us to have that, to have that, you know, really slammed very close to our property. They're, they're making it, you know, their, it's not their backyard, but it is our front yard from across the street. And then also the, you know, when, you know, a lot of things happened a long time ago in 1929. But when, when they purchased the house, which was in 1929, you know, there, there was no hardship of not having, buying a beautiful property without a two-car garage with a carriage house above it. And they're, and they're building a, a huge five, five-bedroom, you know, residence on the water. So I just think it's, it's definitely, you know, pushing the envelope a little bit too much. And I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear a little more comments on the, on the, on the, on why frontage isn't realistic in this particular thing, and why even without the frontage, when you are building a, a new accessory building, there are zoning setbacks that you have to maintain. And, and they're not even, they're not maintaining it. In fact, they're not even maintaining the non-conform setbacks of the shed. They're increasing, increasing it to within five feet of both Wesley and the northerly boundary. So I, I'd like to hear a little bit more comment from the, from the board, if I could, please.
Well, I'm going to ask Attorney Toronto Flores to respond. She's the applicant.
Sure, I, I I was probably talking too fast. I, I did try and address why we feel that it's, it's not frontage. The lot was created prior in 1929 as part of the Air Lane subdivision. It's a different parcel of land than the Pine Street subdivision, which, which was why it wasn't given any rights. The developer of Air Lane didn't have any rights at the time. And so it was never created with, with frontage on or access over the property that became the Pine Street subdivision. And so for this reason, we feel the lot is pre-existing, non-conforming without frontage. Since then, it's, it's also never been used. Pine Street has never been used as an access. It's always been physically accessed off Clussen Lane. It has a 12-foot wide easement over Fort Clussen Lane, which has served as its sole access since the lot was created in 1929. The Fort Clussen Lane is, is land-corded, and the easement is there. It hasn't been physically accessed because of the fencing and shrubs that have been there. It certainly hasn't been physically accessed at all from Pine Street during my client's tenure at the house. So again, we don't feel that, that it is don't feel that, that it is the frontage of a lot, and we don't feel it's subject to the twenty-five-foot setback, um, and then I just, I do wanna reiterate, um, that I did, uh, note the distances from, um, the various parcels, including Mr. Griffin's at, uh, ten Pine Street, um, and the distance, while within three hundred feet, which for zoning is a significant number, um, will be a hundred feet, their, their dwelling a hundred feet from this, that, from the location of this garage, so it's, it's not, you know, up against them, um, when you look at the photographs that Mr. Griffin submitted, I don't think that the garage is gonna block his view at all, um, it's, it's too far to the west, their view to the horizon, uh, is more centralized in those photographs than this garage will go, so while I, I recognize it's, 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 um, and there have been good communication between the parties, um, and, and, and trying to get to a mutual understanding, and, and I realize that it is, um, always worrisome when change is afoot, um, but I, I don't think that those, those concerns are warranted in this instance.
Joe, well, please address the Gale case and how that applies to existing non-conformities.
Yes, so, um, uh, Mr. Griffin, when, um, in Massachusetts, when lots pre-exist a rule, a zoning rule, a zoning bylaw, um, they're allowed, they're, they're given protected status, we used to call it grandfathered status, um, and they can, um, continue to maintain that what we call non-conformity, non-conformity with that bylaw provision, and they can also be altered, extended, and in fact intensified, so the existing intrusion into the setback can get worse by special permit from this board, if the special permit findings are made by this board, including the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood finding, um, you can make an existing non-conformity worse, uh, by altering, extending, or intensifying it. That, that's my, my layperson summary of a very difficult concept.
Thank you.
Um, okay.
Mr. Griffin, that, I mean, that's really the test that this board is looking at, um, do the proposed changes here intensify existing non-conformities, and if they do, then, uh, they will be permitted unless they are gonna be substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood, not just a neighbor, but the entire neighborhood than the existing structure, or in this case, structures. That's the, uh, legal parameters, the legal parameter that this board operates under in this case. Any, anything further from the public?
Hello?
Yes?
Yeah, um, so the, um, she had, you know, she mentioned that we had talked in, uh, but, yeah, we're definitely not even close on, on this particular two-story carriage house that they're, you know, we're a hundred feet away because our property has a setback, um, this new structure is, is moving to within five feet of, of the street line, um, it's seven times as big, twice as high, um, it is detrimental to the neighborhood, it's, it's gonna be, uh, you know, a huge barrier, and, uh, it blocks views, it, it doesn't have a good appearance from our house, and the, um, and, and, um, you know, it, it, uh, and I, I'm not in agreement with, with, uh, with some of the points that she's taking, so, um, so I guess that's, uh, how I have to comment.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, but, um, in my experience, this kind of a project where they're gonna put a really nice new house up and the, um, the garage with bedrooms, it's not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I understand you as a homeowner, your spouse aren't happy with it, but the test is, is it gonna be substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood, um, I will just point out, I'm not trying to be wise guy or anything, but you're the only neighbor that's objected, so it, it seems like the other neighbors don't have a major problem with it, and one neighbor did submit a letter of support for the project, but I've been on the, the board for many, many years now, and unless you can bring in some kind of proof to show that it's gonna be substantially more detrimental, which I, I don't think exists, um, if this board can probably take it on faith, that this kind of a project will only enhance the values in the neighborhood.
Well, the new structure is twenty-five feet from my property, so maybe that was why I was the one that had the concern, and, um, I still think that they have, you know, that, that her, uh, intensification is going outside of, of the, the, the norms that are required for an accessory dwelling, they're not even close to meeting the minimums of whether it was a front, a front or a side yard, the, the, uh, the justification of saying that there was a old hundred-foot, uh, shed in the area, and that allows you to just build a, a, you know, a whole new structure there, this, this two-car garage could ea, could easily be designed, attached to their house on the other side where they already have the non-conformity, and that would, would, uh, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't impact, uh, our side, which they don't feel, they don't feel it's a frontage, and they're turning it into their side yard and buffering it, and they wanna push all the structures, and they're asking for special permission, I, I don't feel it's equitable, and the, um, and you know, if you were, and regardless of age and when it was, uh, designed, I mean, if you read the bylaws, chapter two, three twenty-five, a front yard is a yard, a budding road, street, or way, for a definition, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily say what year, or who built it, or how the properties got changed over the years, frontage, further definition by chapter three twenty-five by law, is a bond, boundary of a lot coinciding with a road, street, or way, they, they run a hundred and twenty-five feet on Pine Street, there's no question in my mind, uh, in their mind, it may not be a frontage, but it is, it is frontage, and even if it wasn't a front, if it was a side or rear barrier, uh, these, these bylaws are put in so structures are held twenty feet back minimum, not five feet from the corner of two lines, and so I just don't feel that it's being looked at, um, you know, I, I just want it to be looked at reasonably.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, any further comments, anyone else out in the public wanna make a comment? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Second for Mr. Dynahue, uh, any discussion by the board? All in favor of closing the public hearing, aye? Brian, okay, Chris, yes, okay, the public hearing is now closed, unanimous vote, five oh, um, discussion by the board. I, you know, I raised the point about the shed, it's a really technical lawyer's point, and I, I don't know the answer, um, I, whether or not the, uh, the shed, um, is a problem or not, I, I don't know, I think I'm inclined to give the benefit of the doubt to the applicant because our bylaw is not clear, and we, we, the town wrote it, we should've made it clear on this point, so we've done this before, when we come to these, um, situations, as we know, there are many areas of the bylaw that are not abundantly clear, and we have tended to, um, go in favor of the applicant in that case, I think if the board does see fit to grant the special permit for this project, both for the house and the garage, we would need a couple of conditions, we would need the construction time, we would need our new general condition that, um, Town Council has recommended to us, and I also think we need to put a condition that no kitchen may be installed in the garage, I think that's important because if they were to install a kitchen, that would make it an accessory apartment, they cannot qualify under a special permit for an accessory apartment that would require a variance, um, those are my comments. Brian, any more comments on the garage?
Dave, I'm in compliance, um, there's no way they can change the year that home was built, and as I understand it, Pine Street did not exist at that particular time, and given the area that we're all fairly familiar with, there's been a lot of homes that have been changed over the past twenty, thirty years, and most of that property in that general area are non-conforming structures, and given the change in three twenty-five fourteen, which is T, it appears as though the community is in favor of the accessory apartment in order to provide more housing, and given the time in which that property was built, the court has come around to wanting to allow homeowners with older homes the ability to make improvements on their homes, uh, which will enhance the house and also, not only increase the value, but instead of having a home sold, because it's only a small home, having it built, uh, in conjunction with the day and age that we're currently in right now, I'm in favor of the house.
Okay, the only comment, I, I would say, is not an accessory apartment, they can't meet that requirement, it's an accessory dwelling residential with bedrooms.
Okay, I, I get that, without
That's okay, just wanna be clear, um, Brian?
Yeah, thanks, I, um, I remain concerned the fact that even though a two-story structure there would necessarily be more detrimental to the neigh, wouldn't, wouldn't be detrimental to the neighborhood, the thing is, but it is substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, and, um, we're going from a, a single-story shed to a two-story structure, uh, with living space, and I, I think that is a major intensification, I think that exceeds intensification, I'd be, I'd be fine with a, a single-story two-car garage, but, um, I think that this is a definitely a substantial, a substantial change, and more detrimental than the existing shed.
I would disagree because the neighbor, the closest neighbor on the property line to the immediate north has not objected, nor has the neighbor in, on the east side, that monster house that's in front of them, they have not objected, so I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I understand that the Mr. and Mrs. Griffin at ten Pine, down on Pine Street diagonally across, uh, they're opposed to it, but the neighborhood has not objected to this and said it's gonna be more detrimental significantly to the existing neighborhood, um, one homeowner doesn't like it, I understand that.
My, my decision, if, if, even if all the homeowners in the neighborhood were feeling the fact they were fine with it, I would still consider this a, a major intensification over the use of the shed, that's
Well, they were all notified, all notified as a butters, and they chose not to oppose this.
I appreciate that.
Jamie, any comments?
Uh, I, I share Brian's concern over the, the shed, um, it, it does seem like a leap to me, uh, and I understand the, the setbacks, uh, but, uh, that's, uh, significant, I think.
Okay, um, anything further?
No.
Chris?
Yeah, when I actually saw this plan for the first time, I had a similar opinion as, uh, Jamie and, uh, Brian, that it seemed like a pretty significant intensification, but due the, uh, zoning laws, however, and it's basically they're replacing in a, in an accessory building with an accessory building, whether it's a shed or a garage, or a garage with a bedroom, it's an accessory building, and the rules seem to apply to accessory buildings, um, they are already non-conforming, it's gonna get more non-conforming for that same accessory building, and for me, that, that, that fits within the approval of a special permit, i- in line with the others we've done as long as I've been on the board, I think the agreement not to have the, the regu, the, uh, the, the condition not to have a kitchen is important, uh, so there'd just be a, a, a sleeping area, uh, but it just seems like it, it's, it's a shed or an accessory building being replaced with an accessory building, the main structure is not an issue because clearly the, the lot and the layout of that lot predates the streets and the previous zoning regulations, uh, and that, that, uh, that road was never considered to be a front or, or a, uh, a budding road, that was, that was, uh, always considered a side property based on when it was initially built in twenty-nine, so I have no problem with the replacement of an accessory building with an accessory building.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Okay, Attorney, anything further from the board? Okay, Attorney Toronto Flores, you heard the comments, uh, what we do, let the applicant do in this kind of a situation is, if you would like, I can take a straw poll of the board, and it won't be binding, it's just an indication of what, how they might vote, and then we'll give you the chance, if you want, to continue or withdraw without prejudice and regroup with your clients and your, uh, architects and builders.
Yeah, I appreciate that, would it be possible, because there are two separate permits, um, one for the alteration of the, um, pre-existing setbacks, and the other for the garage, so living space above the garage, would it be possible to pull them on to the two different permits, special permits?
I don't know, say it again, what do you wanna do?
Well, we're, we're, we've requested two special permits, one for the living space above the garage, and the other, uh, special permit to alter the setback, non-conformities, so I, I was wondering, that, that could inform us if we had to, um, continue and alter the design, it could inform us on how to do it to satisfy s- some of the concerns raised by the board members, if you, if you pulled them on both special permits.
Okay, um, all right, gentlemen, we'll have a, uh, straw poll, it's not binding, just what your inclination is if we were to vote on these two special permits, and we'll, uh, we'll start with, um, Chris, I guess, would you vote aye or no, two special permits, the house, one, and the second one, the garage?
Yeah, I would approve both the house, uh, and the garage, the house certainly, and then the garage, uh, should not be a problem.
Okay, and I, I would do the same, I would approve both the house and the garage, uh, Jamie?
Uh, I would reluctantly, uh, approve both.
Okay, uh, Al?
I would appro, I would approve both.
Okay, Brian?
Uh, I would approve the house, but not the garage.
Okay. Attorney Toronto Flores, what would you like to do?
I, I think we could take the vote this evening, then.
Okay, yes, I Yes, I, um, make the motion. Okay, in case twenty twenty dash forty, um, the board
Would you like, would you like me to do it, Dave?
No, I've got it, I'm just looking at two different things here. No, I've got it, I'm just looking at two different things here. The board moves to grant a special permit to Jonathan and Sarah Venica, trustees of the Venica Living Trust, add, demolish, and replace a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family dwelling and residential accessory structure on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Section 325-22, the Table 2 area regulations, and 325-14-Q, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. Property is located at 2 Quasim Lane, Map 7, Parcel A50-0-R, in the RH1 zoning district. This special permit is granted as the proposed project will intensify one or more existing nonconformities, will not create any new nonconformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. This special permit is granted subject to the following conditions. One, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period from June 30 to Labor Day in any year. Two, there shall be no kitchen installed in the accessory residential building with bedrooms, which was basically the garage with bedrooms above. And three, it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Harwood zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Harwood zoning law, as these may be amended from time to time. Could I have a second on that motion, please? Okay, second from Mr. Armstrong, discussion by the board. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, four in favor, that's Mr. Ryer, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Donahue, opposed. Okay, opposed, so special permit is granted by a vote of four to one.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, Attorney Flores. Good evening.
Thanks.
Sorry.
That's no problem.
Okay, Al, if you would like to call our next case, please.
Case number 2020-45, Wychmea Harbor Real Estate LLC, through their agent attorney, Andrew Singer, has applied for a further amendment to the special permit decisions granted through the case of 2019-28 and 2020-32. Or in the alternative, a new special permit to make additional alterations to two pools and associated hidescape areas. The application is pursuant to requirements of MGL Chapter 48, 6. The property is located at 23 Snowin Road, Unit 12, Map 8, Parcel P2-12, in RH3 and RL zoning districts.
Okay, thank you, Al. Attorney Singer, if you would like to...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, for the record. My name is Andrew Singer, an attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the applicant. We are here this evening for a minor amendment to your prior approval. We had submitted a supplemental memorandum dated January 20th discussing the proposal. This minor amendment is, it's all in the ground, so you'll actually, it can't be seen, it's all within the fenced beach club area and is not visible because it's all ground level. And what the minor amendment is requesting is to add an infant pool and to reconfigure some of the walkways within the beach club, and to have a grassed, natural lawn service alley along the east side to improve the functioning of the beach club between the different parts of the property. There will be no changes to the approved buildings, no changes to the approved parking, no changes to the approved use. The pre-existing nonconforming site and amenities coverages are shifting slightly, but they, as previously approved by the board, are less nonconforming than what the original conditions were. The minor amendment involves, as I said, no change into the pre-existing nonconforming use in the property as it's currently permitted and conditioned, and the Harwich Conservation Commission has reviewed and unanimously approved this minor amendment. I know you had a long night, so this might be the shortest I've ever spoken, but we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, one of the neighbors I thought raised a reasonable point, that you are not planning to open up to the general public, this will still be for the wedding guests and the people that own the condos there, and the members.
That is correct. As findings in your prior decisions, which stated that the beach club and use of the property is a private use that is not open to the general public, those findings remain the same, we're not asking you to make any changes.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Singer. I have no other questions. Jamie?
I have no questions, thank you.
Brian?
Oh, I have no questions?
Chris?
I have no questions.
Al?
No questions.
Okay, is there anyone out in the public that would like to comment on this application? So please identify yourself and give us your comments.
Mr. Chair, this is Tom Cosmer, the author of the letter that was submitted as an butter on the issue of public versus private use.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say thank you for raising that question, Mr. Singer, and I want to thank Mr. Singer for addressing it.
Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Cosmer, thanks for your comment. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
It's all moved.
All moved by somebody who? Al. Al, okay, second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous, public hearing is now closed. Discussion by the board. I think these changes are minor, they're certainly not going to be, in my opinion, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than those we've already approved in the two prior special permits decisions where the board granted special permit relief. I do think the only condition we need is that we simply should state that all the conditions we imposed in cases 2019-28 and 2020-32 are to remain in effect. Anyone else? Comments? No hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
Second motion, we close the public hearing?
No, no, we've done that, we just, we need a motion in the case, sorry.
I'll make a motion that the special permit be authorized. So, case number 2020-45, Wychmea Harbor Real Estate LLC, through their agent attorney, Andrew Singer, has applied for a further amendment to the special permit decision granted through the cases of 2019-28, 2020-30, and a new special permit is granted by the board having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaws. There are several conditions with regard to the previous case, where this property will remain private, case number 2019-28 and 2020-32. All conditions that are in both of those cases will be met for this particular case. They don't have to have, demolition is not a concern.
No, no, just one comment, Al, before you finalize the motion, instead of a new special permit, it's better to do an amendment to the two existing permits.
All right, this is an amendment to the two previous cases, 2019-28 and 2020-32. So this is an amendment.
Okay, thank you. Second to Al's motion? Second for Mr. Armstrong, any discussion by the board? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, granted unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Singer.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your review.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, Al, if you could call our next case, please.
Okay, case number 2020-46, John E. Fantasia, through his agent, Michael Wosner, has applied for special permit to upgrade and renovate existing porch of a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Table 2, area regulations set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 3 Bayberry Lane, Map 10, Parcel X5, in RH1 zoning district.
Okay, we have somebody here for the applicant. We have Mr. Fantasia here, or his agent, Michael Westner.
Mr. Fantasia seems like he's signed in.
All right.
But he's muted. Perhaps he stepped away.
Well, I'm going to send him a little chat message here. Okay, I told him he needs to present his case now.
Is it possible we can call the next case and then go back to Mr. Fantasia?
Yeah, I think what we're going to have to do is, I'll just put a little star here, we'll come back to it later on. Why don't we call, the case is already called, so we'll just leave it called, we'll just move on the agenda, leave it open for when he comes back. If you could call case 2020-47, please, Al.
I think Al's got it on mute.
Oh, yeah, Al, you're on mute. Yep.
Thank you.
2020 just came in.
You need to call 2020-47, Al.
John E. Fantasia, through his agent, Michael Wosner, excuse me, David Scott Sloan, trustee of 49 and Snowin Road Nominee Trust, through his agent, Anthony Andrew Singer, seeks to amend a special permit granted in the case of 2020-29 in order to accommodate required egress stairs. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Chapter 325-54, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 49 Snowin Road, Map 15, Parcel N2, RL zoning district.
Okay, attorneys, thanks, Al. Attorney Singer, if you could present your case, please.
Yes, good evening again, ladies and gentlemen, Andrew Singer, attorney for the applicant. This is a request as well for a minor amendment of case 2020-29. You approved a raise and replace of the structure on this lot through an oversight, a change needed to be made to add a second emergency egress stairs for the house. The only place to put it is on the north end of the house, since the main stairs are on the south end. I did submit a supplemental memorandum discussing this. The stairs, as you will see on the plan, do not encroach closer to Snowin Road than the existing house. And while they will get closer to the northerly setback than you originally approved, they're still further away from the northerly setback than the house today. Right now, that northerly setback is 2.4 feet, it will be 6.55 feet with the stairs. The house itself is further back because the stairs just extend off from the north face of the house. There is no change in site coverages or building itself. The Harwich Conservation Commission has approved these stairs as an administrative field change, and we're here this evening asking for your approval as well as of a minor amendment, so the stairs can be constructed on the replacement dwelling. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Singer. Any comments, Brian?
All set, no questions.
No comments, no questions.
Al?
No comments, no question.
Jamie?
No questions.
Okay, I guess the only comment I have is, just as in the Wychmea Harbor case, we should have one condition, that is, that all additions imposed in our decision 2020-29 are to remain in effect. This is a very minor change, certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than anything approved by the board in issuing the special permit originally in case 2020-29. I think we should also handle this as an amendment to case 2020-29, an amendment to the special permit, rather.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this case, case 2020-47? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Could I have a second, please, on that motion? Mr. Murphy, second, any discussion by the board? No discussion, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, public hearing is now closed. Any discussion by the board? No discussion? Okay.
Case number 2020-47, David Scott Sloan, trustee nominee, through his agent, Andrew Singer, seeks an amendment to special permit granted in case number 2020-29 in order to accommodate required egress stairs. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, 325-54, set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. three twenty five dash fifty four, set forth in MGL Chapter Forty A, Section Six. Property is located at forty nine Snowin Road, map fifteen parcel into, in the R L zoning district. The board grants an amended special permit, having found that the applicant uh meets the required uh requirement of the bylaw. Uh, in the Gale case, the um, the applicant, um, the Gale case is only. Special, the special permit is granted subject to the following conditions. That the uh, conditions that were originally in the case of twenty 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 dash twenty nine will be continued in effect for the case of twenty twenty dash forty seven.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion by the board? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, amendment to special permit granted unanimously, Attorney Singer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, Mr. Fantasia, I see you're back. We called your case, stepped away. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had difficulty with the audio.
Okay, in case number twenty twenty dash forty six, John.
Al, we're okay. We already called it. He just needs to come and present his case.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
And my wife is on the video.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I'm the re- resident of three Bayberry Lane. We have an existing porch with jealousy windows, and we're replacing the jealousies with Anderson floor-to-ceiling windows on the existing structure. Um, and we're raising the floor of a cement slab for that porch to be uh confluent with the flooring in the house proper. And I think you have the plans in front of you.
Yep.
There's no change in the dimension or the footprint of the current porch. And I believe my immediate budding neighbor has sent a letter to the board indicating no objections, Mr. Galliotta.
Hey, I don't have that, but I'll take your word for it. Did we get that letter, Shayla?
Yeah, he might have uh sent that recently.
I, I checked uh through yesterday. I had to work from home today, so I didn't see it. Um.
Okay, uh, who was the name? Um, Mr. Fantasia?
Mr. Galliotta. He's the uh, a budding house on the north side.
Okay, we'll take your word for it.
And I believe you, you, you have the architectural plans, correct?
Correct. Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, are, are you putting heat and air conditioning in this um new room?
No, no, no air conditioning. We plan to put a electrical heating under the flooring, which will be tiled.
Okay.
To make a three-season porch.
Yeah, okay, 'cause Mr. Sullivan and I weren't sure why this came before the board. Um.
Good question.
Yeah, there were no setback issue that I could see, but I uh assume because your lot is non-conforming, you're increasing the habitable floor area by putting the heat in, and that does require a special permit, 'cause you're intensifying the uh, the existing non-conformity.
Okay.
I have no further comments or questions. Chris?
I have no questions.
Amy?
No questions.
Al?
I have no questions.
Brian?
Uh, no questions, folks.
Hey, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this application in case uh twenty twenty dash forty six? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. I have a second.
Second.
Alright, we'll.
Case number twenty, excuse me.
All in favor of closing the public hearing on that motion? Okay. Dan, I think Al's, yeah, Al voted. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Wait a minute. I don't see any problem with this uh application. I don't believe the changes will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the uh, the existing structure. Anybody else have any comments on this?
No comments.
No? Okay, I will move that in case twenty twenty dash forty six, the board grant John E. Fantasia a special permit to upgrade and renovate an existing porch of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's, Table Two, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter Forty A, Section Six. The property is located at three Bayberry Lane, map ten parcel X five in the R H one zoning district. The board grants this special permit, having found the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case, as the proposed project will intensify one non-conformity, will not create any new non-conformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Object to the following conditions. It's a small project, so I'm gonna simply propose, instead of uh limiting the time period, that all of the uh construction vehicles and construction equipment be placed only on the applicant's property at uh three Bayberry Lane and not on the road. And it's a further condition that this approv- approval, I'm sorry, it's a further condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter Forty A, Section Seven, and the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
One second.
Murphy looked like he had his hand up there first, so. Any discussion by the board on the motion? No discussion? Take a vote on the motion. All those in favor? Aye, 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 aye. Motion uh is passed unanimously. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fantasia, your special permit is granted. Good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Good evening. Okay, so, Al, you can call. Where are we here?
Case number twenty twenty dash forty eight.
Do we need to take a break?
Mr. and Mrs. Fantasia, you need to uh cut your audio connection, please. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Al.
Case number twenty twenty dash forty eight, Robert E. Crowley and Susan J. Crowley have applied for special permit or an alternative, a variance, to convert an existing garage slash studio into an accessory apartment. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's, three twenty five dash fourteen and three twenty five, Table Two, Area Regulation, and Table Three, Height Bulk Regulation, as set forth in MGL Chapter Forty Eight, Section Six and R ten. The property located seventeen Charlene Lane, map one one three, parcel S one dash eight, and R R zoning district.
Hello?
Thank you. Alright, Mrs. Crowley, if you could make your presentation to us, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, hi, Ms. Chairman Reiler and members of the board. Thank you. I'm Susan Crowley, and my husband and I would like to request uh a special permit uh because we have this existing structure that we would like to turn into a, a necessary dwelling unit. But it does present a couple problems with uh the bylaws, because we are short a little bit of landmass. Our development was uh carved out in nineteen seventy five. It is non-conforming to the current zoning uh requirements, and so we are just a little short of the twenty thousand square feet that we need. Um, if you recall, some of you may recall, in August, I was here and did not have my facts correct. So I have corrected my application, and I thank you for hearing me again. Um, we only need twenty thousand square feet. We have eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy seven square feet, according to our new survey and site plan. So we are humbly requesting a special permit in order to make our existing structure a necessary dwelling unit. Furthermore, we plan on no um new construction, so the setbacks should not be a problem as it is an existing structure. We will incorporate a bathroom and a kitchen simply by putting uh plumbing along the back and build it inside the structure. Uh, so um, that is really all we're requesting. We uh seem to have a, it, it would seem that we have a problem with site coverage, because our land surveyor did his job by claiming that um a, a good deal of gravel and crushed shell counts as site coverage. But I have determined that that's well over six percent of the property, and if I subtract that from the total site coverage that he came up with, it is under the twenty five percent um maximum allowed, so it's twenty three point eight percent. So if you would indulge me, that detail, this is our site plan, which hopefully you have copies of, and maybe you can see that we have lots of parking spaces that have been created, because we raised four children in this house, and they're all now adults and emancipated. Only one is at home. We had lots of cars here for a while, so we do have five parking spaces. And currently, we only have three adults living here, so there would be um an additional two spaces for what we hope to only have one person in this space. Now, we would like to have either a young person or an elderly person, but of course, we will not discriminate based on any of, of our applicant's um situations. But uh, we really just want a, a quiet situation. This is our home, and this is, you know, it was built as a two-car garage, but I've been using it as an office. I'm sitting in this space right now and a photography studio for twenty years without um any problem. We have people coming and going a little bit, and the neighbors have been fine with that. So I don't think it would change the environment of the neighborhood at all, and I think it would make a very good use of this space. I'm no longer photographing weddings. Took on that. I've photographed over six hundred weddings on Cape Cod in the last twenty years, and I'm done with that, so this space would be better served for the town and for the community if we were um able to make an accessory dwelling unit. Okay. Um, so I have addressed the two details that the uh building department was unhappy with, and that is the um landmass and the site coverage. So if uh, there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Yeah, I, I think I had raised this the last time it came before, is um in order to qualify for a special permit, you would have to proceed under three twenty five fifty one H. And of course, you don't meet the requirements, as I pointed out last time. Uh, the floor area exceeds the allowed floor area. You needed a minimum of forty thousand square feet on your lot. You've got eighteen thousand seven hundred.
No, sir, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman Reiler. Actually, we need a twenty thousand minimum. So I'm really only asking for twelve hundred twenty-three square feet. Um, that's the, the um, because we are in the R R district of the town. It's um not a watershed area, so we don't need forty thousand square feet. That's where I was wrong in August. I apologize. We need, I, I knew it at the time. I just didn't know what to cite when I was in the meeting. And it is um the fact that we are in this space that only requires twenty thousand square feet. We are at eighteen seven seven seven, and that's because when they were carving out these lots, they were, there was no zoning that called for twenty thousand square feet for anything. So I'm hoping that because this is an existing structure, and has been since nineteen eighty-five, when it was built, and I have been using it as even a, a, you know, a small business for twenty years. My neighbors have been fine with that. I don't think it'll change the uh nature of the community. Um, but again, uh, according to the bylaws, the landmass is a little short. And just to uh show good faith, I did send a letter to the people that own the property behind us on a cul-de-sac at Two Bay Road, and they have a very oddly shaped property, and about a third of an acre is just woods behind our property. And I explained our situation, and I sent them a letter and asked if we could purchase twelve hundred and fifty square feet off the back of our fence, and I just never heard back. But I was hoping that you folks would see fit to give me this special permit, because that's really our only issue. The other seemingly uh, it's, it's, it seems to be a problem, but it's not, is the site coverage. It's because the surveyor, Tom Stello, did his job by claiming that um the, the crushed shells and the gravel and the gravel driveways were site coverage, when in fact, they are permeable and they shouldn't be considered as site coverage. It's not building coverage. And in fact, uh, Mr. Reiler, the building coverage is um also adjusted and corrected. Uh, my application now shows the correct uh figures based on the land surveyor's figures, that the house is much larger than its, its, it, this, this structure, the studio structure that I hope to become an accessory dwelling unit is less than half of the size of the house. It's exactly five hundred and ninety square feet, and the um half of the house is six hundred and something. So we fall within that margin as well.
Well, it actually, the required lot size is forty thousand square feet. It's on your own site plan.
Well, the site plan, you know, the site plan must be wrong in that, that detail, because I, I can assure you, and even Charlene Greenhouse sent me a letter saying we are not in the watershed district. We are in the R R district, which is actually part of your agenda. We only need twenty thousand square feet.
Well, I, I hate to disagree, but I'm looking at the town of Howard's, Table Two, Area Regulations, which says R R forty thousand square feet, as does your own site plan that you submitted.
Well, my site plan only says that because the surveyor put that up in the corner. But in fact, the information I'm looking at here says we only need twenty thousand square feet. Let me see.
I don't know what you're at, but you need forty thousand square feet, bottom line.
Um, let's see, it says the park was situated in an R R district. It is twenty thousand square feet. So I don't understand what your um objection is.
I'm looking at the zoning code, and I'm looking at the site plan prepared by the land surveyor, and they are both forty thousand square feet.
The land surveyor was incorrect, because he didn't realize we were not in the watershed district.
It's nothing to do with the water district. This is a zoning requirement.
It's the zoning district. We are solidly in the R R district.
And the R R district requires a forty thousand square foot minimum lot area to be conforming.
Well, what I'm looking at says twenty thousand square feet if situated in an R L, R M, or R R district, and forty thousand square feet if situated in a water. district and 40,000 square feet if situated in a water resource overlay district, which we are not in. So I took this right off the website.
It may be.
I'm not looking at it, I don't know what you're referring to, but in the zoning code, it's 40,000 square feet and that's what governs us.
I'm looking, Dave, I'm looking in the, for the accessory apartment regulation and noted to have an accessory apartment in the RR zoning district, you must have 20,000.
Thank you.
I can't find it right, the number, I forget it, I read it in prep for the meeting.
That's where I was wrong in August and this is really what I've been counting on because I did learn this early on.
Oh, wait a minute, okay, hold on a second.
And that changes everything.
Yeah, maybe because.
It's still short, I mean, it needs to be 20,000 and it's currently at 18,777.
Right, and that's why I'm asking for a special permit.
Well, if you can't get a special permit when you're short, you'd have to get a variance.
A variance, okay, thank you. In the alternative.
Looking for, you're right, they did amend that, I had forgotten that, I'm looking.
Yeah, I'm looking at something that was printed about a pending AG approval approved May 7, 2013, Article 12 accessory apartments.
Article 12. Oh, you know why? I don't have it, it's online, I haven't printed it off, I've got it. Okay, regardless, well, I'll stand corrected at 20,000, but you still don't meet the requirement because you're short and you can't therefore get a special permit. You would have to convince us somehow you qualify for a variance and to do that, you would have to show that due to either the soil conditions, the shape, the topography of your land or structures and specific to your property, you can't do this without a variance and you have to show substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and you'd have to show no substantial detriment to the public good and that granting it will not nullify or substantially derogate from intent or purpose of the bylaw. I'm not as concerned about those last ones, but I don't see how soil conditions, shape or topography on your property entitle you to a variance for the proposed use.
Well, with all due respect, I'd like to disagree because our property was carved out in 1975 before there were any zoning laws. It's a strange shape, it is not a rectangle, it is sort of trapezoidal and it does create some problems and it is 18,777, but behind us, like I alluded to before, there's a whole third of an acre of woods. If I had purchased four feet off of our back fence, it wouldn't have changed anything about the community or the environment or the neighborhood, but it would have allowed for this to be legal. So it's, it's something that I was hoping that in the wisdom of the board, you would agree to let me create this space to be a necessary dwelling unit for some needy person that could use a home. And it also helps my family, you mentioned that there could be a financial hardship. Well, we happen to be tradespeople, my husband is a builder, I have been a photographer all my life and we have four children, two of which are handicapped. My daughter has cerebral palsy, my son has an autism disorder. This unit might actually be used by my own family in the future, if not for living purposes, for actually income purposes as they inherit our property. I don't know, all of our children are emancipated and doing very well right now, but we never know what the future holds, especially with handicapped children. So that's our financial situation and we're just trying to be as wise as we can with our resources.
Okay, thank you, Jamie?
Uh, this question's for you, Dave, they have to show just one of those?
Yes.
Okay, so financial hardship.
No, they have to show soil condition, shape or topography is an issue, that's one requirement.
They have to do, all right.
Would be substantial hardship, financial or other, and then third would be the no substantial detriment to the public good if granted or the granting will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So you'd have to beat all three of those tests.
All three.
Shape, the topography of the land or structures or soil condition, only one of those three.
I see, I see. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, Al?
Uh, yes, the, last time, as I remember this case, there was an issue with regard to the square footage of the house. Say that's changed?
Well, I didn't have the correct information on my application and I apologize, sir. Yes, the square footage of the house has been confirmed by the surveyor and it is significantly larger than 50% of the square footage of the accessory unit. If you want exact numbers, I have them on the application.
I will point out, we don't have certified, you know, building plans that show the square footage of either. We have a handmade drawing with some dimensions, that's all we have on the proposed apartment.
Well, it is the existing structure, sir, so I'm hoping that the town does know what we already have here, we don't plan to change the footprint. Okay, I do have it here now, the net floor area of the principal dwelling is 1,316 feet, half of that is 658 feet. The net floor area of the proposed accessory apartment is 590 feet, so we do fall within that, that.
Is that, is that the square footage on the assessor's records?
Yeah, the assessor has our land mass a little smaller, but I don't know that they even have any information on the dwelling unit. It's the, it's the surveyor that I recently had do the site plan that I'm using these figures from.
Brian?
I have it. I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
The Town of Harwich certainly use more for housing, that's, and I can appreciate the hardship situation here, we're just looking at future for the family. So, Dave, just to confirm, this would not be a special permit because this is for an accessory apartment as opposed to, because they're not changing, it's a non-conforming lot and it's an approved, already non-conforming building, so they can't change the use of that to an accessory apartment because of just the 20,000 square feet and is that what I'm hearing here?
Yes, that's why they need a variance.
So if they wanted to turn that into their own living situation without a kitchen, then that would be okay, is that correct?
Yes, without the kitchen, they could qualify.
All right, but because it's going to be a accessory apartment, the non-conformity of the lot does not come into play at all?
Yes, because they've got, well, yeah, because they don't have 20,000 square feet.
That's why we're here tonight.
Well, I realize that, I just want to, just want to wrap my head around, I apologize asking these questions back, I'm trying to learn at the same time. So it's a non-conformity, in a non-conformity situation, we still go to, even though it's a non-conforming lot, we still have to apply the new zoning regulations to it.
They would have to meet the requirements of accessory apartment and if not, and they don't, that means then they would have to get a variance for what they want to do, because they don't meet the.
I can see where variance won't apply here at all because it doesn't. I'm just, just going back over and asking a question, on a non-conforming lot, you have to still go by the dimensions of the new code versus the code that might have been there when they, when the house was first built. Okay, I see, Tom.
Yeah, okay, I did print it, I see it now, I just didn't have it at my fingertips. Yeah, they would have to meet the requirements to qualify as a single-family dwelling with accessory apartments.
Even though those are new regulations versus the fact this is already a non-conforming lot, that's all I'm asking. We can't, we can't waive the fact that they don't have the square footage because even though it's a non-conforming lot.
No, we can't grant a special permit, we can only grant variance.
Yeah, and I don't see where a variance falls into place here.
Right, if they wanted a special permit, they would have to have, as Mrs. Crowley said correctly, I was incorrect, they would need 20,000 square feet. I'm sorry, I have the amendment behind a clip here, this has been amended since the last time it came up, or at least the last time I looked at it. So, yeah, unfortunately, because of that, it looks like they do have, they got under the square footage for the apartment size, so that, I do see it on the plan there, on the site plan. And there was, the Board of Health had an issue too, the last time, I don't know if they still do, because the Board didn't give us any new comments this time, but I know the Board of Health had concerns about the proposal when it was before.
The only, the only problem with the Board of Health, sir, is that we would need to upgrade our septic system, which we would plan to do.
Okay, but that still doesn't get us past the requirement here for a variance.
Well, that's why we're here tonight and that's what I thought that, you know, with the town wanting more affordable housing and we have this existing structure, we don't plan to make any changes in our community or our neighborhood and we just want to make better use of this existing structure. We thought that the Board would see fit to give us this variance or permit or whatever we need. The land behind our house is unused and let me reiterate that the property behind our house, which is just off of our back fence, is on a cul-de-sac at the end of Bay Road in East Harwich and it is an oddly shaped property where the house that's already built there is way over on the other side. There's a good third of an acre that's right behind our fence that will probably never be developed, so, unless they put a shed there or something. So it really does allow for that space that we all hope to have when we want 20,000 square feet. And as I said before, I offered to purchase that space from them, they didn't seem interested, but I was hoping that the Board would appreciate my effort and the fact that if you actually came and looked at this property, you would see that we have lots of space in and around us and our neighbors that are very close to the setback on the right that is just non-conforming but existing structure, they have no problem with us doing this. We do have a neighbor that doesn't like my dogs that you've heard from, but that doesn't seem to be relevant that she's concerned about the parking, we have plenty of parking. So I really am hoping that the Board is going to honor our request and the town's urge, urging to create more affordable housing. We're hoping to have either a young person or an elderly person that just needs a place to live that's affordable, because this is a nice little space that, that would be really underutilized if we didn't do this moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody out in the public that would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. I have a second. So I'm going, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to close the public hearing?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, wait a minute, I had to close the hearing and we'll have board discussion.
Okay.
You're going to vote to close the public hearing?
No.
No, okay, we, we're closing, it was four in favor, Mr. Donahue, it was in opposition closing public hearing, but I closed the public hearing. I have four to one vote, but Mitch, now let's discuss it at the board, Mr. Donahue. Al?
I, I have a recollection last time that one of your, your neighbors was concerned about the parking and I understand from what you said today that there are five spaces. The concern, I think, was last time that the driveway can accommodate apparently three cars, possibly four, and that because you're on such a very narrow street, there was a concern relative to parking in front of your property. I'm just curious where the five parking spaces are on the property.
Yes, sir, well, Mr. Donahue, if you, if you were, if you were given the site plan, you will see that we have a shell, a crushed shell area that is used currently and has been for several years for two spaces and also a gravel area out front that is used for my husband's van, he's a builder, and that's one space. So the driveway is basically, I use it and we have two spare spaces. I hope that answers your question.
Just describe to me where that gravel area is, are you referring to, as I look at your home, to the left of your front area?
Yes. If you look at my home, to the left of the, the house is a gravel area that's just the size of one large vehicle, my husband parks his van there every night and to the right is the driveway and to the right of the driveway, we have created a crushed shell area where two vehicles may park easily.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, to Mrs. Crowley's point about the town wanting, you know, encouraging affordable housing, that's true, but the town just amended the single-family dwelling with accessory apartment provision, that's why I was still looking at 40,000, but they still, in the amendment, have retained a minimum square footage and in this district RR, it's 20,000. So yes, the town wants affordable housing, but with limits, there are certain requirements that have to still be met. Unfortunately, this property does not meet them and I believe legally, it can, the only way we can give relief as a board is through a variance, not through a special permit. And my view is a variance, the variance requirements are not met in this case. This board has always been very reluctant to grant a variance unless the legal conditions are met, and I don't think they are. So that's, that's my feeling on it, I would have to vote against a motion to grant a variance in this case.
May I say one more thing in my, my, my argument?
No, because I closed the public hearing, you can only address questions if anybody wants to address a question.
I understand.
All right, Jamie?
Uh, I, I agree with you, Dave, I'm, I'm very sympathetic, I totally recognize the fact that the town needs apartments and, and it would certainly make sense if that lot was larger or we could, or you met the qualifications, but unfortunately, you don't and so I'm going to vote no.
Yep.
I'm just thinking about this, I'm looking at G on the section T, it says minimum lot area required for a parcel to allow an accessory apartment shall not be less than 15,000 square feet if parcel situated, I'm trying to remember, we're in RRH, what district we're in here?
We're in RR.
R. Just bear with me for a moment here as I look at this. All right, unfortunately, the property is not in the right district.
No, she's in RR.
Right. Right.
Brian?
Well, as you can tell, I was sympathetic to the situation, but given the not qualifying for a variance and 20,000 feet, I unfortunately will be saying no.
Chris?
Yeah, I think everybody else, I'm sympathetic to the need of more affordable housing, but the section that actually Al just pointed out, it's already half the size, 20,000 square feet of the, of the zoned RR district, so they've already taken into account the fact that many of these properties in RR are pre-existing nonconforming. And they're saying, I would assume with that certain regulation, that they don't want very small, below 20,000 lots being used for accessory apartments, so unfortunately, it would have to be a variance, certainly. That's how I read it, and not a special permit, and I don't see how a variance is justified with what's been put in front of us here.
Oh. I mean, we could take a straw poll vote if you would like, Ms. Crowley, but it doesn't sound like you're gonna get four votes in favor.
Yeah, I don't know what else I can change at this point, so I don't think that I'm going to ask to withdraw my application. I might be back in a couple of years if things change.
Yeah, if we decide against it, I think you're precluded, I believe it's two years, you remember, yeah, two years. I'm happy to make a motion to let you withdraw without prejudice, if you'd like to do that, and that way you could come back at any time at your convenience when you think you can present a petition again.
Ah, I'm not sure what I can change, if I can't convince you that this strange shape and the year of, of the carving out of my property doesn't allow me to have this with a variance, just because it's only 1,223 square feet that we're off. I was hoping that the, the needs of the community were greater than that much space.
No, I think to justify shape, that's would have to be the only location on your property where you could put this, and I don't believe that's the case, you've got plenty of room if you wanted to go elsewhere on the property. So, although I, I'm not sure, I don't, not sure you could get a variance for that either, but I mean, it doesn't.
I'm just not sure what I could change, so I think I'll just allow you to vote.
If you attached it to your house, you might be able to argue for a special permit, I, I don't know, I'd have to think about that. But I, I would recommend you maybe, you know, withdraw it and consult legal counsel.
Okay, well, I'll do that then, so thank.
But I, I guess that's a suggestion, if you wanna take it, and if not, that's up to you.
Well, we invested quite a bit of money to get to this point, you know, between the site plan and all, so let me do that, and I will consult some legal help, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you, I will ask to them to withdraw my application without prejudice.
Okay, I will make a motion to let the applicant in case 2020-48 be allowed to withdraw without prejudice, and I'll also move that if the applicant refiles essentially the same case or a similar case for this use, it is an accessory apartment at 17 Charlene Lane, which the Board will waive the filing fee, so that way you won't need another filing fee.
Thank you.
You're welcome, could I have a second motion, a second on that motion, please? Alvin, any discussion by the board? All in favor of the motion allowing Ms. Crowley to withdraw, one, two, three, four, five? So motion granted, sorry, we're not trying to punish you, but we, as a board, on variances, really need to make sure the legal requirements are met.
I understand.
Under the law, special permits give us a lot more leeway, as you heard from some of the earlier cases. As long as what the applicant wants to do is not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, it's gonna be allowed, and that's a very easy test to me, a variance, as I read those conditions, very difficult to me. So.
May I ask you, sir, what you were referring to when you asked if it was connected to our house, it might be different. What were you, could we rent something out that was connected to our house?
Well, you, you might be able to, you know, if it's nonconforming, I, I didn't study it, so I just throwing that out and suggest that, you know, you need counsel and your builders and whatnot, but if you got a nonconforming, if it would simply be an intensification of existing, an existing nonconformity, you might be able to do it with a special permit. But I'm not advising you, because I can't advise you, I'm not a Massachusetts lawyer, I'm a lawyer of wealth, but not in Massachusetts, so.
Well, I thought that's, I thought that's what I was doing, because it is an existing structure, we're not changing or doing any new construction, so I'm, I'm disappointed, but I understand what your restrictions are.
And it's detached from the house, I made that point. I, I do believe there's a difference, and I heard attorney, what's her first name, I can't remember, Flores hyphenated name, but I heard her citing those cases, and I didn't look at them, but I still think there's a difference between detached and attached. And I know this board has looked at that before. So anyway, thank you for your.
Based on the, what I'm reading, and this, and one of the things, Mrs. Crowley, the, this is a new regulation, so it's online, it's not, you've got to get it printed out, but what I have in front of me, it's either attached or detached, and it seems like the regulation supplied it both.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not a lawyer either, so you need to get a legal opinion on that from somebody, just to be sure.
Well, thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening. Go on. 2020-49.
All right, 2020-49, David P. Panza and Rosemary B. Panza, through their agent, attorney Paul Tardif, have applied for a special permit to raise a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a two-story, single-family dwelling on same foundation. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's 32554, as set forth in MGL chapter 48, section 6. Property is located at 123 Deep Hole Road, map 25, parcel C dash B, C1 dash B2 in the RR zoning district.
Hey, Attorney Tardif, are you with us?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port, and I represent the applicant, David and Rosemary Panza. And they are available on the phone, as, as is their builder, David Groo. And as you indicated, we are seeking a special permit to allow for the raising, replacing of the structure that's at that 123 Deep Hole Road. Property is in the RR zoning district, contains approximately eight, a little over 8,000 square feet of area, and currently has a one-story, single-family dwelling with three bedrooms and one bathroom. The structure was built in approximately 1940. It is a corner lot with frontage on Deep Hole Road and on Beach Hill Road. The, the structure that's there does comply with the 25-foot setback on the Deep Hole side, Deep Hole roadside of the property, as well as the 20-foot side setback to the east, but the structure does encroach into the Beach Hill Road front yard setback by about 10 inches, and also on the northerly side by about 3 feet, 3 inches for where there is an existing deck. The applicant is seeking to remove that structure, replace it with a two-story, single-family dwelling on that foundation, again, still three, three bedrooms. The only difference in the, the footprint is going to be, if you see your, the plan that I submitted, there are two small bump outs, one is on the Beach Hill Road side of the property, and it's just a, it's about 11 by 5 foot, so about 55 square feet, it's just gonna square off the house on that corner and give them a little bit more room on the inside. And also, on the front, there's gonna be a covered porch, it's gonna be open, but it's a nice detail. That, that front porch is still gonna comply with the front yard setback on the Deep Hole roadside. But on the Beach Hill roadside, with that little bump out, it's gonna increase the, the area in the setback by about 2 inches. And if you measured out the, the portion of that new bump out that's going to be in the setback at all, it's about 2 to 3 square feet total. So we are, we're hoping that the special permit can be granted pursuant to Mass. General Law's chapter 48, section 6, besideing the Gale case, of course. I don't think that an additional 2-inch encroachment into that front setback is going to be detrimental in any way, much less substantially. I also would refer you to the fact that even the Beach Hill Road, where the pavement is located, I know that's not what we use, we use the, the actual property boundary, but if you actually go out to the pavement, it's going to be more than 25 feet from that, from that area, so. For those reasons, and if you have any questions, we hope that the special permit can be granted tonight.
I, I have no questions, Jamie?
No questions.
Ryan?
I guess my question was the existing deck, is that, is that staying, or is it being built on top of it?
Yeah, it's either going to be replaced with another deck, or, or they're gonna leave it, I think they're gonna remove it and just put it back in.
Okay, I have no further questions.
I have no further question either.
Chris?
I have no questions.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this case? Okay, I will, hearing no one, make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second, please? Second, like, Chris Murphy, any discussion on the motion? No, all in favor of closing a public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay, unanimous, public hearing is closed. I think this project meets the requirements, the bylaw and the Gale case. Technically, well, I think, I think we can handle it as a special permit, it's an intensification of an existing nonconformity. And I, I just don't see any issue with it, I don't think it's gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I do think we need to limit the construction time, have that condition, and then our new general condition, but otherwise, I don't have any issues with it. Any discussion by the board?
Regarding the construction time, I mean, the lot seems to be able, would be able to handle, they, they took it on a fence, but they could handle, you know, units besides the driveway, also on the lawn and so forth, they had to, just throwing that out.
Oh, you don't think we need the construction condition?
I would say the street there, Beach Hill Road is rather narrow.
It is, it is narrow, so is in Beach Hill.
It would have to certainly be on the property, I think.
Yeah, I, they need the timeframe, you're right.
Yeah, I, I think we should, because I don't, I don't think we want to jam up Deep Hole Road during the high-traffic time, because that's
Absolutely right.
Down the Red River. Okay, unless there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, we did that, this would be in the case.
All right. Case number 2020-49, David P. Panza and Rosemary P. Panza, through their agent, attorney Paul Tardif, have applied for a special permit to raise a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling and replace it with a two-story. The board hereby grants a special permit, having found the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the, and the Gale case. The property is located at 123 Deep Hole Road, map 25, parcel C1 dash B2 in the RR zoning district. The, there are, the conditions are going to be, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period of June 30th to Labor Day in any year. During this.
No, we don't need that one, we just need the last one out.
Yeah, it, it is a condition of this approval that the violation in, of terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violations of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to General Law, chapter 48, section 7, in the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
I'll second that motion, any discussion by the board on the motion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Special permit is granted unanimously, Attorney Tardif.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, have a great night.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, we're cooking now, Al.
Case number 2020-50, Andrew and Erica Merrill, through their agent, Chris Cannon, of Architect 33, have applied for a special permit to construct a two-shed dormer on a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's 325-54, as set forth in MGL chapter 48, section 6. The property is located at 19 Braddock Street, map 7, parcel F7, in the RH1 zoning district.
Evening, this is Chris Cannon, just, can you confirm that you have my audio?
Yeah, we can hear you, we can hear you, Mr.
My camera's not working, so just wanna make sure.
We can hear you fine.
Okay, I am the architect for Erica and Andy Merrill, and so I'll be representing them tonight, I don't know if either one of them is on this, this call, but anyway, we, we put this forth to the building inspector, it was denied because of the setback conflict that we have over north boundary. What we're proposing to do is add two dormers to the front of the building, we're going to remove a portion of the south end of the building, porch and garage, replace those with a slightly larger garage and extension of the kitchen, and add a second floor to the, both those areas. All of that will be within the set, within the approved setbacks. So, really, the area here that we're looking to seek relief from is the encroachment on the north setback by one of the dormers. And it, currently, we're 9.3 feet from the lot line, and this particular dormer will be no closer than 12 foot 4, so it's actually further from into the building than the encroachment that exists. So that's basically what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you, sir, I have no questions, Brian?
No question, don't think I noticed, the site plan, just out of curiosity, you're, you're removing a catch basin in the front of the house?
Correct, correct, there is a, an odd catch basin at the front, we don't really know what it does, so that'll be removed. We will be, I should add, replacing the septic system and increasing the bedrooms to four by way of that, that new system, and it fits along with the, with the reserve on site.
Thank you.
Great.
I have no questions.
Al? I have no questions. Chris?
I have no questions.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll move to close the public hearing. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Chris Murphy, second it. Uh, any discussion by the board? All in favor of closing a public hearing? Aye, 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 unanimous. I think this case meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case, um, I think this will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and actually will be a really nice-looking project. I do think we need the two conditions, both on the construction time and our new general condition. This is down even yesterday, or Monday, when I drove down, it was pretty tight down in those neighborhoods. No, I have no further comments. Uh, anybody on the board, comments?
No.
No.
Okay. I will move that in case twenty-twenty dash fifty, Andrew and Erica Merrill be granted a special permit to construct two shed dormers on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Section three-twenty-five dash fifty-four, as set forth in MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section six. The property is located at nineteen Braddock Street, map seven parcel F-seven, in the RH one zoning district. Uh, the board is making this grant of a special permit upon the finding that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case, as the proposed project will intensify one or more existing nonconformities, will not create any new nonconformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. This special permit is granted subject to the following conditions: one, there shall be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period from June thirtieth to Labor Day in any year. Two, it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Harwood zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, and the Harwood zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. Could I have a second on that motion? Chris Murphy, second? Uh, discussion by the board on the motion? No discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion, in favor? Aye? Aye? Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, the special permit is granted unanimously, Mr. Merrill and Mrs. Merrill. Good luck.
Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Call up our last case, if you would, please, Al.
Case number twenty-twenty dash fifty-two, Mark Jacobson, Renee Brown, have applied for a variance for a side setback requirement as to construct an in-ground pool. The application is in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section ten. The property is located seventeen Chase Street, map four parcel S-six dash one, in the RH two zoning district.
Okay, um, Mr. Brown or Mr. Jacobson, who do we have here?
Actually, this is Mr. Kelly, I'm the, uh, the contractor, that's, uh, is looking to build a pool for the Jacobs.
Okay, if you could present your petition, please, sir.
Okay, so we are just looking for a, um, a, a variance on the side setback. Um, it's a twenty-foot setback, and we're actually asking for a, uh, to have a relief down to ten foot. There is a letter from the immediate abutting, um, neighbor, who is in favor of, uh, of allowing this. There is going to be, um, you know, from the front, from the, from the closest streets, there's, there's gonna be a privacy fence, so you would not see the pool from the street. Um, the backyard is gonna be approximately ninety feet, um, so you really wouldn't see it from that, that, that street either. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be a privacy fence on the side yard, there's gonna be a privacy fence in the front yard, and there will be a lower, uh, picket, a little bit of picket fencing, um, in the backyard, but as, as I stated before, you wouldn't, uh, really be able to see this from the, uh, from the street in that area, so it's, um, yeah, so it's just, uh, that's kinda, kinda my thing, so I just, any, answer any questions, if you had any.
Oh, you need to convince us why the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures entitle you to a variance?
We can't get the, uh, the, the septic, where, where the septic is placed, it doesn't, um, it doesn't really have another area that we can put it, to get it over there. Um, they've, they've put the septic, their leaching field is right in the back of the house, so it's just, it really doesn't have the space for it. So it's just, we were kinda looking at, uh, the, the extra expense that it would take to get that septic moved, to be able to put that in the, in an area where it would fit in his yard, would just be a little costly.
Uh, why could it not be put on the east side of the garage there?
It just, it's, he's got a, uh, he's got a neighbor over there that I think would be a little more opposed to it, he's already had a, uh, they already have, I know they've, um, it's, I don't think they're on the, the best of terms, and we just think there's gonna be an issue, and since, and plus, it's kind of out of the way of, of, of his house, you're kinda going out of, you know, you're going on the backside of a garage, you're not really getting to use it, uh, you know, it's kind of more of a, usually your pool's a backyard item, uh, something that you can, uh, come out of your, out of your house and use, he's got a, uh, there's, um, there's a, a door on the side of the house, over there, where he wants to use as a bathroom right there, um, it's just, kinda, everything's just a little better situated for that usage, um, so we were just hoping to get that.
Okay, I, I guess, I understand why he wants it there, but I just don't see the legal justification for a variance, but anyway, I will go on to, uh, Jamie. Uh, no, we'll go on to Brian, sorry, the icons moved on here.
Yeah, I, I had, um, the same question, Dave, uh, on the other side, side yard, I'm not, I don't even think, I don't think there'd be any setback problems on the side next to the garage. I realize the convenience of having it close to your house, but I'm not sure where, and I appreciate the hardship of not being able to put it in the backyard, and, and that because of re, redoing the septic in the field, I totally understand, and I would consider that, that situation, uh, you know, attention for hardship situation, and the topography and so forth, and the cost of moving the, the, uh, septic, but it seems from the dimensions, an opportunity to put it on the other side of the garage, so, um, there wouldn't be a hardship, you know, it solves the problem, I don't think they'd require a variance, because it, the setback should be fine. The other question I had was, on the plan, regarding coverage and so forth, I don't see any, uh, plans there for patio, or is there gonna be, you know, a patio around it? There's nothing on the plans that, that's showing what may happen for, uh, surrounding the pool.
Yeah, there was gonna be a six-hundred, sorry, yeah, there was, there was gonna be an extra, an additional six-hundred square feet of, of patio area, would basically be going, uh, four foot on, four foot on the, uh, side closest to the abutter, um, the, uh, you can basically come about two feet off of the house, enough for drainage to go through, and then four feet on each end. And that would be a stamped concrete patio.
Had, Mr. Kelly, had you looked at, I mean, I realize you did, it's in the plan showing on the side you have it, but on the side next to the garage, did you try placing the, the pool there, and how the, how the situation was regarding the twenty-foot setback? Because you've got additional twenty feet on that side.
Yes, it's, 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 it's a lot, it's, it's probably more doable over there, again, you know, the, to the two main reasons is, it's, it's farther away from the house, and the other one was the, is, is the, the neighbor, they, like I said, that's, that's already a, uh, a, not a good situation, and he just feels like it's just gonna, uh, it could boil over and become a bigger problem later, just, just, I just, he just thinks that he might possibly be bothered and become a, a, an ongoing argument, uh, he's just trying to avoid that type of thing, he's got, the other neighbor on the other side has no problem, they get along well, there's no issues there, he's just trying to avoid a future problem.
I think if you can put it within the setbacks, which I, I think you can, I agree with Brian, uh, then you can do it as a right, the neighbor won't have any basis to object, I mean, they might not like it, but they won't have a legal basis to object to it. Uh, Jamie, comments, questions?
Yeah, I, unfortunately, you, I, you don't meet the, uh, requirements of a variance, so I, I think building it on the other side of the garage makes the most sense.
Chris?
Yeah, same argument, it's, I had the same question on the other side of the garage, and it looks like, uh, you could place it there legally, as you said, within right, so that's an alternative location, uh, that would be doable on the property.
Right, he's like I said, he's just, he's basically just trying to, trying to, trying to avoid altercations down the road, it just, that's good, you know, it's just trying to, trying to keep everything civil, so to speak.
Al?
Yeah, I also have the problem with the variance, it's, uh, something that cannot be justified, given the property that's located adjacent to the garage.
So, uh, Mr. Kelly, we can, um, well, let's see, if there's anybody out in the public that wants to make a comment on this case? No, okay, I, I'm gonna leave the, uh, I won't close the public comment, uh, period for a minute here. You could take a straw poll, as we did earlier, I guess, on the first case, it seems like days ago, but I guess it was just evening we did that. It doesn't sound like you're gonna get a variance, I might suggest you take a withdrawal without prejudice, if you need to come back within a year, we'll waive the filing fee.
Yeah, I think we'll do that.
Okay, I, uh, will move that we close the public hearing, nobody out there had a comment, could I have a second on that, please?
So moved.
Second from Mr. Donahue, uh, any discussion by the board? All right, we'll take a vote on the motion to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye? Aye, aye, okay, five, unanimous, uh, we close the public hearing. I will move that in case twenty-twenty dash fifty-two, uh, Mark Jacobson and Renee Brown, uh, who have applied for a variance from the side setback requirement to construct an in-ground pool, uh, at the property located at seventeen Chase Street, map four parcel S-six dash one, in the RH two zoning district, um, be granted the right to withdraw the case without prejudice. These applicants refile a case for a, an in-ground swimming pool at seventeen Chase Street, within the year, uh, the board will waive the, uh, requirement of a filing fee. Could I have a second on that motion, please? Okay, Mr. Armstrong, uh, any discussion by the board on the motion to withdraw? No? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye, 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 unanimous. Sorry, Mr. Kelly, you're gonna have to go back to your clients, and, um, I think it's still doable, as I and several other people said, it might not be the ideal location, but, uh, they don't qualify for a variance.
Understand, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, have a good night.
Okay, you too. Uh, thanks, everybody, for hanging in, long meeting, I congratulate Brian and Chris, they, as you saw from my email, they have now been, uh, appointed as regular members. We also have a Timothy Bailey, whom I don't know, I don't know if anybody knows him, he has been appointed as an alternate, also at last night's board meeting. So we'll have one alternate in addition to the five of us. Let's see, I guess I need a motion to approve the minutes of our December ninth, twenty-twenty meeting, I sent Shayla some stylistic comments, so, and Brian had a substantive comment on the date, so subject to those comments, I would move to approve those minutes. Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Murphy.
Who was the, who was the, who was the person who moved?
What's that?
Who offered the motion?
I did. And, uh, Chris, uh, seconded it. All in favor of approving the December ninth minutes? Aye, 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 unanimous. Okay, on the, uh, first case, Brian, that was great, if you have an objection, you should do just what you did, vote against the, uh, the motion.
I still have it.
Um, and it really hasn't happened, I think, with this present, um, membership of the board, but there were, back in days gone by, that would happen a lot more frequently, where one board member, or maybe sometimes two, like in our last forty B, two members voted against the, uh, approval of that project, and they had good stated reasons, they just, you know, disagree with the other three of us, you'll run that habitat decision, Al, right, the one down across from Har, uh, from the, uh, hair place there, Harry's.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's good to have discussions and back and forth, and, uh, you know, if you're not convinced, stick to your guns and vote again.
Oh, Dave, I, I appreciate that, I, it's still, um, I look at that Gale case, and, and I look at the intensification issue, but, which also, it's on both the structure and I thought the use. And we're going from a, a little shed that holds a, a lawnmower and some garden tools, and going to a two-story building that's seven times bigger and, and twelve feet high, I, I just don't, I still am not convinced why it, it qualifies, it is, that building is more detrimental than the little shed, particularly, and I, I'm trying to wrap my, I'm trying to wrap my arms around this one for future cases.
Well, let me ask you a question, if he wanted to put a shed in the exact same size as that garage, would that be okay?
If he wanted, if he wanted a large shed that was one-story, I said, I'd be fine with, that's a single-story that he has now, in a larger footprint, I'd be okay with that as an intensification, but they've changed the use, considerably, into, into a living environment, no one's living in that shed right now, so I don't know why, if somebody was living in the shed, then I probably would be saying, okay, it's an intensification, but I think it's a, I think that was a major stretch.
I don't think the issue is the size, it's, I, I, whether or not the shed violating the, uh, setback over there established a nonconformity that the garage apartment can now glom onto, if you will, that was what I was trying to get at, maybe not our particular, but I don't think the size of the, uh, structure was the issue, I think it was whether or not the shed legitimately established a nonconformity that the garage could now intensify, that was where I was coming from, and I think it's a
But isn't an accessory structure an accessory structure, no matter what the use of that structure is, within the code?
Well, it's an accessory building residential with bedrooms, which the code says gets treated as a special permit. If you were gonna replace that shed with another shed, it would require a variance.
Yeah, it would?
You go to three-twenty-five fifty-four, dash A, what did I say it was? No, it would be B, B-seven or something, I gotta look it up, I can't remember these things.
See, what I read, it said a necessary structure, and the, it called out a shed, for a unit less than a hundred square feet could be within five feet, over a hundred, any accessory unit had to be twenty, so that's where the nonconformity came in, now I actually measured that shed, if that was ninety-nine, there would have been, they would have had no case, because it would have, at least that's how I read these, uh, uh, the, the bylaws or the zoning laws.
Wasn't, wasn't part of the argument, including that new Comstock case, as? Wasn't part of the argument, including that new Comstock case as saying that accessory structures do not always require a variance? That Comstock case?
Well, I think if, again, what I look at at 325-54, A7, B, says if it's not, if you work your way through it, if it's not a single-family residential structure, residential structure, it has to get a variance.
Right, but residential doesn't mean necessarily that you have to live in it. And there've been a lot of arguments about being an accessory to a residential structure.
Well, yeah, you have to go back and look at the definitions. And we have accessory building, then we have accessory building residential, and then we have residential accessory building with bedrooms. And it's a little confusing. I don't think it's, well, what's the word, orchestrated together? And that's why I said I think our bylaw needs to be cleaned up. But that's the purview of the planning department, not us. And just among us, you know, they never consult us. So they do what they do, and that's why we have conflicts. And that's why my position, and I know the board has agreed, not necessarily with this membership, if there is a conflict and it's our code, the town, we're going to let it be construed in favor of the applicant. Because shame on us for not cleaning it up as a town, not us personally, but as a town. So that's why I sort of went along. I'm not sure legally the attorney was correct. And if the neighbor, it would actually be great if the neighbor sued, because I'd love to see what a court could say. But I thought the applicant should be granted the special permit because the bylaw problems are the town's problems. You know, that's where I was coming from.
That seven A and B, they're, they're not very clear. I want you to just point it out, Dave.
It's not, and I, I couldn't do it when the case was going on. But I have, when it was, you know, other times quiet, tried to work through all of those provisions, and they don't fit together neatly. They're confusing.
And I think the way a lot of these bylaws are changed is from looking at other towns and what they have. I think a lot of towns in Massachusetts are just as unclear, which is why that Comstock case, which was about Gloucester, that was his only board of appeals in Gloucester, went on to try to further describe what an accessory building was and wasn't, and when a special permit could apply.
Right. But the neighbor was right, because if you look at the definition of accessory building residential, the definition in 325-2, it says cannot be used for seasonal or year-round living, which is directly in conflict with a residential accessory building with bedrooms, which obviously is going to be used for seasonal living or year-round living. I mean, what do you do with a bedroom? You spend it, obviously, so direct conflict. And this has come up, I can't tell you how many times. But anybody who wants to go deal with the planning department, I will authorize you to do it, but I am not doing it. I just, well, as far as I'm concerned, we'll go in favor of the applicant when we get that kind of a conflict. And I was happy to see everybody in agreement on variances where, I mean, it clearly, the requirements aren't met. My concern always is if we, and I understand these people, and I feel sorry for Mrs. Crowley, but if we start giving these variances out willy-nilly, people are going to be all over us. And I, I think it's our obligation as a board to, you know, take a fair approach, but constrained by the statute and by the bylaw. Otherwise, why have zoning? I mean, if we're going to let anybody do what they want, why have a zoning code?
Right.
Anyway, I don't want to say anybody any longer. I think it's good after the.
Good question, Dave.
Good job managing the meeting to be done before 10:00.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Good job managing the meeting so it's done before 10:00.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it's good after the meetings. It's just that this one went long. And I guess next, how, how many do we have now? Eight for next month?
Well, that was what I was going to say. Well, so there was one case that instantly asked for a continuance. You know, and the way we set up that email to the applicants, it sounded as though if you ask for a continuance now, you'll get on early. That's why I put them on. So, so we've got already five or six cases. And since nobody got continued tonight, I think it's either six or seven. I can't recall.
Okay, well, we'll do the same thing. We'll go to 10, but they're not, as we saw tonight, they're not all lengthy. We get one or two that take a while. But then we have like the dormer case that's pretty straight up. I mean, you know, in the two amendments, that attorney singer had very, you know, simple, small little amendments, not going to change anything. So with that, I thank you all. I found out day before yesterday, I am now eligible for the vaccine in phase one. But I also found out there isn't any vaccine, so it's academic.
That's quite true.
Maybe next week, but even though they haven't enough vaccine to finish the phase one people, they're going to start phase two. So I totally screwed up, in my opinion, but, and I got a friend in Alabama who's just went and got the shot. No problem. He's got a date for the second shot.
So we don't qualify, we don't qualify for phase one because of continuity of government?
I don't know. Maybe we're being punished because we're a blue state. I don't know. And Biden hasn't been in long enough to change things, so. But they are, I think we will be getting a lot more vaccines, too. It's just that, I don't know. No, no solution short term, but eventually we'll get vaccinated. So in the meantime, be careful and stay well. And thanks, everybody. I'll take a motion or I'll move that we close the meeting at 9:57. Second? Ryan, all in favor of closing the meeting? Aye. Meeting is closed. Thanks all. Thanks, Shayla. Have a good rest of the week.
You too.